You guys could all rise, join me in the We
Here.
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 We have a forum. Alright, so now we move on to questions. Councilman, this is an opportunity. Make comments or ask questions. Any two? Three minutes.
Mayor and Mayor. Uh Jerry Legansky seventy-nine twenty-nine Farmingdale. Uh there's been some correspondence I've had with uh Byron. Listened about some of the electrical problems having in my neighborhood. I've gotten some feedback from ComEd, but I don't think his information he gave lines up with what we've experienced. There was another outage, I think on September twenty-eighth that he didn't list. That I believe happened. Also the two last, in the last two weeks. Um. The last one was on um November fifth, the Friday, where there was literally no, no bad weather at all. The twenty-fifth was that Monday after all the rain, uh which we were out for a couple hours then as well, so. Uh I'm curious to know if any other aldermen, uh besides maybe the people in my neighborhood had those two outages during that period of time. Anybody?
I was just gonna say that I actually got correspondence from Matt Reinkar who's at seventy-seven seventeen Bradford. He was talking about the fact that um on that Monday after the big rainstorm, though, power was completely out for four or five hours. We have no idea why, because no bad weather. I was gonna bring it up, even the communications bring it up.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, since September twenty-eighth, we've had three outages and I don't think any of you have had any hours, any outages during that same period of time, so I'm asking. I'd like to see from the city exactly how my neighborhood acts up to the rest of the city, because I think I'm in an older part of Darien and I think there's a bigger problem going on than than we know about, so I'm just getting on the record and I'd like the city to come back Byron and show me. I'm sure they could supply that, you know, how does the whole s- city rate in terms of outages compared to my neighborhood, because Correct. Yeah, and I did ask about the outage on the twenty-eighth and he didn't get back on that one either, now. Maybe he's only giving things, is there a way I could have, maybe is it, he's only giving the history of that one transformer, but maybe I could still lose power that maybe doesn't go through that same transformer that he's looking at. I don't know how it all works, I'm no engineer. But uh, or maybe he only listed things over a certain amount of minutes, but um we had these problems about four years ago and things got better, but it just seems like in the last month and a half, couple months, it's just, you know. It's rearing its ugly head again, so I wanna, you know, just see what else we can do to start looking at the situation. Uh I have another neighbor here too that um he can tell you his experiences as well, so. Uh no, we um, well, he said during the last five years, we've had seven outages, Mayor. And he thought that was acceptable, but again, I think he's missing some. And clearly in the last uh two weeks, we've had two outages that no one else in any other ward here has had a problem with. And I just think that there's something going on, maybe in, we're on an old grid or something. I mean, for underground lines, I, I just can't understand why we'd have the, you know, these many problems, so, thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from our city council meeting on October twenty-third and the city council meeting on November first. Um So we will do the first approval of the minutes from city council special meeting October twenty-third. Do I have a motion? Alderman Sullivan, second, uh Alderman Penny. Alright. Um Oh. Oh, can I have the roll?
Hi.
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 Dustin.
Hi. Stane.
Hi.
And
So moved. Alright, can I now have the approval of the minutes from city council November first? Do I have a motion? Just on um second Belzak. Can I have a call please?
First.
Gus.
Hi.
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 So moved. Um next on the agenda, we have the receiving of communications. Do any of our alderpersons have any communications and if so? Let us know. Yes, Penny?
Um I ju- thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have one communication and we came in through social media um yesterday regarding um brush pickup. Um a gentleman named Ma- Michael Matt wanted to know if city could send the brush pickup, but due to the equipment it uses clear our snow, is the same equipment take care of our brush? Clearing up snow. Father nature say when that happens. Send brush might air foot up. No.
Yes.
I had a conversation with Deborah Mark Antonio at her home on Green Valley regarding the Nykor Pipeline deforestation project. We walked her property and the attached Nykor property and tomorrow we have a meeting at her home with the homeowner, rep from Nykor, myself and Dan to discuss the details of the project. And there are gonna be quite a few homes on Green Valley that are going details tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. Uh just reiterating uh communication that I received from Mr. Jerry Legansky from the eight thousand block of uh Farmingdale. Uh I take that as actually a, a couple hundred emails or a hundred emails because he copied many residents in the area. And I think what Mr. Legansky wants us to, wants us to look into and I'll follow up as well is that is our area having more outages than other areas of town, and if that is the case, what needs to be done to address it, what investment has to be done? I've seen in Congress recently passed the Build Back Better Plan, I'll actually reach out to uh ComEd and see if there's any opportunity or even our congressman to get any of those funds to improve electricity uh consistency in our ward. And I also received communication from Steve Leopoldo, eight thousand block of Farmingdale with regards to leaves being blown into the street. Uh these leaves were grinded up, found up, so he sees residents still blowing leaves in the streets. Does not pull your block up the storm drain and then cause storm drain.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to follow up.
Thank you. Um I did receive um communication from Mr. Kelly, my ward five. Um basically just um asked that we do um traffic study or dive north frontage road curve area by pine where was not that long ago, two fatalities. Um I not a Darien road that is I dot road. Comcast, I dot and the county. So I did bring him up to speed on that. And he um in a follow-up email, he also um pointed out that Comcast um is especially testing the cable modem network. And he um recommended that um it'd be smart for the area's mayors to get together and form cyber infrastructure council focused on advancing our area's network capabilities.
On the agenda, we have report, so on my report, we have um due to the resident of Michael Desmond, I am asking advice and that was
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. Yep. And then a second.
Fellas.
Notice
Haha.
Hi.
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 And then, not on the agenda, but I would like to add on Sunday, December fifth, the Darien Historic Society will be conducting their annual tree lighting the tree lighting will be held between fourth, four-thirty PM followed by a drive-through with Santa giving out we have Joanne, do you have anything tonight? Joanne, um now we have the city administrators report, Vanna. You? Um Steve Thomas, do you have a report for the council?
I do not.
Mr. Goombach, um do you have a report for us?
I'll report, but more than happy to pay any question.
Okay, and then any council members, do you have any questions? Um next we have the treasurer report, uh Treasurer Corrin, will you please give your report on warrant number?
Trust. Number for twenty-one, twenty-two, fourteen and the amount of eight twenty-nine dollars forty funds payroll for seven forty-one total proved thousand.
Do we have a motion? Uh motion by Belzak? Do I have a second? Second by shower and then we have a roll.
Hi.
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 And then Treasurer Corrin, will you please give the monthly report for October twenty-two-one?
The report, like P and the uh six month um revenue for the general fund. Ten million, three hundred and eight thousand there's seven million, three hundred and five thousand, seven dollars, current balance five four thousand. Water fund rev two forty-nine dollars, so two million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand current balance, four million, seven thousand for fuel tech, revenue thousand eight dollars thirty four hundred of water station fifty thousand, six dollars, turn thirty fifty F sure to hundred thousand, six forty per turn within four hundred five that like some uh kid quickie only items but all all other ask yeah if recorded up for all good. Other per S like good all two go on the guess my look doesn't make a work facility. Our sales tech, those are for, yeah little bit over two thousand years kind of spending more that the other that years are who higher Korean and the expense over real put play in the but like petroleum and some of those it good year like that most revenues policy rev S going to the cap project. Look. So we'll have budget work so revenues, I talk, hey, as get budget take but project. Look at try to make it's getting harder to do every after maybe the project bud three years out, real revenue performance oh out, oh real other
that we hopefully won't have to aggravate the residents anymore than they've already been aggravated uh with those types of things, so uh I, I think kudos to the council. It's good that the economy seems to be performing better and also that we've been able to put those funds away for uh these future improvements. I think we're one of the better municipalities in terms of maintaining our infrastructure and every year we've had commitments to doing that and the council's been doing a great job at that. Uh the other thing that helps is uh with the good investment performance from the police pension fund. It looks like our contributions to that are slowing down a little bit now. Anybody, nobody knows really, I'll talk about the police pension fund in a minute. Uh knows where those numbers are going to go, but at least in the last twelve months, it's been uh definitely a period of outperformance which allows us to fund it normally without any big increases in the amounts that we've been funding. We have been funding it at a hundred percent of what the actuary determines every year uh since I've been here since two thousand and seven, which thank you again for the council going along with that and instead of kicking the can down the road, so we've been funding that adequately too, so. Thank you, you've been doing a great job at that. So. Any more question? Yes, Tom?
And we also use some of the funds for economic development too when those opportunities come, come around as well, so.
Exactly, uh although not all of it, I mean, the Home Depot and the Walmart are, were an outlay to keep those in Darien for a long period of time. The other economic development that was done was done for Carriage Greens and that wasn't done as an outside outright grant. They are actually paying us back those amounts, actually we're receiving month, monthly amounts from them now. Uh we'll do a true up every January, we're gonna do a true up on that. And every year they will reduce the amount that the, we advance them basically in form of an interest-free loan. They'll be reducing that amount to us and we have a lien on the property and that's anticipated to be paid back within ten years, actually I'll be surprised if it's not paid back a little more quickly because the numbers seem to be running real good right now.
It's good to have those funds for any future opportunities that, that come to council as well, so.
Okay, then I'll talk about the pension funds, anybody have any more questions in terms of the six-month P and Ls? Okay, as I mentioned, uh we had our police pension fund, our quarterly meeting to evaluate the performance of the police pension fund that was held on November fourth. And as I had anticipated, uh when we talked about that meeting, uh the third quarter, which is July, August and September, September, as you may recall, the stock market really did underperformed quite a bit and I was hoping maybe it would be a break-even quarter. It was close, but for the quarter it was an underperformance by the, the fund lost seven tenths of a percent. So overall, not too bad, equities were down one percent for the quarter, fixed income was completely flat at zero. Uh but I looked at, I got the numbers for October, October was a particularly strong month and October was a positive performance by three percent on a combined basis, I don't have the breakdown between equities and fixed income, but essentially fixed income is essentially bringing us zero at this point. Uh so it's, uh we've had a good performance in October, so hopefully that can last through the next quarter and hopefully we could equal or exceed our seven percent bogey that we have for the year. Uh to give you an idea though, just to put it in perspective, if you look at the five-year return of the pension fund, overall, it's at about a nine and a half percent return over the average for the last five years, with equities being about fourteen point three percent of that. Fixed income about two point eight percent. So you see the difference between the equities and the fixed income, so if we're gonna hit our seven percent bogey, uh obviously we have to be heavier in equities. One thing that can help that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, uh the police pension